Morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, December 12, 2024. We're here for a work session. As we start all our meetings, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Denise, would you mind leading us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Denise. Okay. We really only have one item on for open session, and that is the resolutions. And we also have a quick riveting action video that we'd like to put up. And we have the rec department here to give us some information. So I would ask Ray Coyne and Jordan, would you guys come on up and give us some information that I understand is very nice?
Sure. We'd like to talk about the Kana Kaki and refer to Councilman Maryfield, who want to do the holiday ski. And so she has some information on that.
Yes. A while back, we had mentioned that we wanted to have some free sessions for the residents of the town during the holiday season. And Ray has been working with the hockey rink in Kana Kaki. And right now, as of right now, we have a date of Friday, Feb., I'm sorry, December 27th. It's going to be from 11:30 in the morning till 1:30 in the afternoon, two hours, free skating for all the residents of Riverhead, children and their families. And it's also going to include free skate rentals as well. We're working on another date for the holiday as well. We're hoping for another date during the daytime hours on the weekend of the holiday. I'd like to also, and Ray had mentioned that, you talked to Ray about if you want to just mention the website and the membership?
Yeah. Basically, you have to, in order to go there to prove you're a Riverhead resident, you have to go to riverheadrecreation.net. And what we'll do is we'll put a link right when you get on there. You click on the link and you just fill out the form, you print it out, and you bring it to the front desk. So anybody that's a resident, the system, just putting your address, the system will default know whatever that address is, and it'll allow you to print out a membership receipt. We also did the discounts. You get a discount at the rink. We actually sent out an email about two weeks ago. We went from nine memberships to 44 memberships, right?
About 44.
So it's starting to gain momentum. We're going to continue to market throughout the year and build. And Jordan, you had some events too, right?
Yeah. We're looking, also, we're planning like a 55 and over skating event.
Oh, so you wrap us in bubble wrap and put us out there? I like that.
Is this the senior ice skating?
Yes.
Right.
Just for the rec supervisor, I'm not eligible to participate in that skating. Obviously, we know that.
He's still defending, yeah.
And we're also...
Under 55.
We're also looking to have...
Not for long.
We're also looking to have like an open skate day coordinated with a curling workshop, do like a curling and cocoa type of event on a Saturday morning. We haven't locked down a date for that yet, but we're working with Kana.
I just want to mention the senior ice skating socials. It's going to be Tuesday, January 28, and Tuesday, February 25. And those are from 1:15 PM to 3:15 PM. And that's free for all residents of Riverhead that are 55 and older. That's the free skates as well as the free admission. So please come on out for the senior ice skating socials as well.
And there's more information on that at riverheadrecreation.net.
Wonderful.
And just one more. Our brochure for the winter will be coming in the mail tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So you, all that information that we just discussed will be in there. So like I said, look for it in your mailboxes. It's online right now at riverheadrecreation.net, and we're geared up for the winter.
And hopefully by Tuesday for our next town board meeting, we'll have that weekend date.
Yes, we'll have that date, yeah.
For the winter break for the kids, the holiday break for the kids.
Yes. And we'll heavily market it after this, too.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all we have.
I just want to clarify something. People say, you know, what's the benefit of the ice hockey rink and only nine people have used it? That is so incorrect. Only nine people signed up for a discount.
Correct.
We have dozens, if not hundreds, of people in Riverhead using that skate rink through hockey teams, through hockey leagues, through skating lessons, through all these different events that are up there. So when somebody says only nine people, let's be realistic here, that is not even remotely the case. We've had tons of Riverhead people. And I offer, go up and visit the ice rink and take a look at it and see, and see how busy it actually is. And are there people from out of town? Sure there are, but a lot of Riverhead people use that ice.
We're tracking them.
On a regular basis.
A high percentage of Riverhead residents have taken advantage of it.
They just haven't signed up for the discount or haven't participated in like, say, a free skate night, but they're up there using that place all the time.
Yeah. And using the free skate nights, discount skating, and our marketing, which are going to drive more and more traffic there, it's going to be the place to be. It's a beautiful...
It already is the place to be. I mean, quite honestly, it's a packed house up there.
It is.
Kana Kaki has gone outside of hockey. They've been posting a lot of stuff for figure skating. There's some incredible young kids in town that are doing the figure skating.
Yeah, they told me about that.
Unbelievable what they can do. It's really impressive. And so it's not, it's not just hockey.
I'm interested in the curling.
Yeah.
That sounds, that sounds pretty cool.
Maybe set up a team, you know?
Yeah, we may have to get some town teams together there.
Is the PAL getting, doing anything? Have they thought about maybe doing some skating?
I could speak to them. Yeah, we haven't connected with PAL yet on that stuff. We kind of want to do it our way and then continue to market it through them. But yeah, we definitely can.
Anybody drives by there in the weekends, the lots are full. It's great. And I've always expressed that the bathrooms are, the septic system construction is complete. The main building is coming in shortly, like any day now. And so that should be hooked up, hopefully by the first of the year. But, and the expanded parking is for everybody. The bathrooms are for everybody, you know? And so for walkers, runners, bicyclists. In Veterans Memorial Park, once again, we did get the stats in for the rent-a-bike, and we were on the top of the list for the most users in Suffolk County, so that's awesome. So there's a lot of people that are going there and using the amenities, you know, meaning the parking and the bathrooms. Pickleball courts, they're expanding, you get crowds over there on the weekends and so forth. So additional parking and everything was necessary just to expand the overall park services with the bathroom. It's not just for the children.
The trees over there, too. The trees are beautiful.
Right.
Trees look really great, so a lot of people step forward, individuals, to purchase trees. So now we got a nice aesthetics going along there. There's going to be more trees. We've already sold more, so more will be planted in the springtime. So doing a great job.
Very good. And keep in mind, that park is only roughly 20% developed.
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, there's a lot of space to continue with development up there, and a lot of good things may be coming down the road. So these are all necessary improvements that are needed. I just, the naysayers kind of drive me crazy sometimes, so I stop reading some of their comments. But if you know the facts and if you know the real deal, what's going on up there, then I think you could have a better understanding of how, what a great amenity this has become for the town.
Just to park them out there, even in the winter months, it's full on the weekends. And it's a big parking lot. And during the week, we have pickleball players, the people walking the nine-mile trail, the dog park. We have tons of people there in the morning. You go there, 50% of the parking lot today, like on a cold day, it's filled. It is, it is a place to go to, and it's 20% built out, but full.
Just a reminder, the next month is shotgun season up there for deer hunting, so the trail will be closed. So basically for the month of...
Or take your chances, you know?
We're in orange dress.
For the month of January, that trail will be closed, so.
And I know people get upset about that, but you know, the hunters have some rights up there, too, so.
I think the pandemic, you know, enlightened everyone towards, you know, outside gatherings and the park, you know, usage just went through the roof, and it hasn't slowed down. It hasn't stopped. Running clubs, walking clubs, senior clubs, everybody's using it, so it's great.
And just to sign up for that hockey discount, if you're a Riverhead resident, you can call the Riverhead Recreation Department, 631-727-3200, extension 737.
Thank you. Thank you, Jordan.
Excellent.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Okay, before resolutions, are we ready for Riverhead in Action? Hi, this is Tim Hubbard, supervisor of the great town of Riverhead, and you're watching Riverhead in Action, a media campaign designed to highlight the incredible work of the 350-plus employees. They comprise Riverhead's 26 departments and sub-departments, town events, projects, job openings, local businesses, and other town happenings. I hope you find this informative and enjoyable, and thank you for watching Riverhead in Action.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of Riverhead in Action. Today we have something so special for the holiday season. We have Shop with a Cop. And joining me today is Charles Mishari, Riverhead PBA president.
Jonathan Dever, Riverhead SOA president.
And I can't tell you how much support we have from our police department here in Riverhead. They are here by, I don't know, maybe close to hundreds. And a lot of families, too, for a great cause. We're going to do Shop with a Cop today. And I just want to ask you, what inspired you to, you know, get involved with this initiative?
We were just looking for an opportunity to connect with the community. Our SOAs selected a few kids that we thought we could help in the community, and we are, our police officers also stepped up to help with this, you know, to help with this evening and this event, and we're hoping it's a success.
Well, I want to thank you for what you're doing, and I'm so excited about today because we're going to film not only the families, not police officers, we've got some police dogs, too, so we're going to have a lot of fun. And the gifts. So happy holidays. This is Riverhead in Action. More than coming a few.
We're to the toy section. Let's look in the back. I have a lot of ones. Let's look at the toys. Come on. What else do you like to play with?
Oh, these are good. I like Cocoa Melon.
Cocoa Melon?
No.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's not... Obviously no.
Obviously no, okay. Hard no on the Cocoa Melon. Got it. That's a pump. It's got tires.
Oh, that was the thing that's going to jump like...
Oh, you want a pogo stick?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I saw some over here. Um, where did I see those?
Oh, yeah, my school, under, under, my school's under 100 here.
Under 100?
Yeah.
79, okay. That's still in the budget.
Wow.
Wait, did you want a pogo stick? I saw them before.
Huh?
You want to look at the pogo sticks?
I don't know what they are.
Wait, I think I saw them over here. Oh, oh, let me see. What do we got?
Do you like this set, Ray? With the flowers?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that one's cool. That one was cool. Is that the one?
Okay.
Yeah? Nice.
Getting a shot of Onyx? How you doing, buddy? We got, we got Lopey over here. What's up, Lopey? Good boy. George, Max, and Morris. Let's get a shot.
John, I kissed you and said hello, bud. I don't want to get anybody jealous.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a fantastic day. It is Shop with a Cop, and I'm with the police officer that helped orchestrate this all. Please announce yourself.
My name is Officer Kaylee Castankey with the Riverhead Town Police Department.
What inspired you to do this, though?
So I love working with the community. I was in the, in the Coke Division, Community Oriented Policing, and now I'm the School Resource Officer. So I love the children. I decided that I wanted to do something good to give back for the children of Riverhead.
And what do you enjoy about it most?
So, right, it's the holiday season, so I just wanted to put some smiles on the children's faces of Riverhead, and I think we did that tonight.
How do you think initiatives like this strengthen the relationship between our police department here in Riverhead and our community?
So I think it's really important, right? Some children may be nervous or scared to see a police officer in uniform. So when we do things like this, it really breaks that gap, and, you know, they think differently of us, and I try to explain to them that outside of this uniform, we are the same people.
I really like that a lot. How can community leaders and local businesses get on board and support?
So I believe, you know, just speaking with us, if we can get in the community as you are, I know you are, sir, a lot, you know, with going into the stores, getting to know people, and just being part of events, I think that really bridges the gap and gets, gets us out there with the community.
Okay, and aside from all the gifts and presents all these happy kids are going to take home today, what do you think the children and their families will take home with the most?
Honestly, I think love, right? This could bring them together, right? This brings people together, you know, shopping and the love that with the parents and seeing us, I think that brings happiness, to be honest, right? You know, that brings people together.
Yes. Well, I can't thank you enough, our community can't thank you enough, you and our Suffolk County PBA, our Riverhead PBA, our Riverhead Police Department, we can't thank you enough. This is Shop with a Cop right here in Riverhead, and they are making history happen.
Thank you so much.
Very nice. Just a side note or a footnote to this, all those police officers you saw there were all on their own time. Nobody was on the clock. They all volunteered to come in. They had approximately 25 families that they were able to take through the store and shop for Christmas for them. And one of the things that kind of stuck out in my mind, what I saw there, is that all the kids weren't just grabbing toys. You saw some of them grabbing clothing items. That shows the need and the sense of the need in the community. And for the police department to take in 25 families like that and do that speaks volumes about the police department that we have. The men and women involved there are fantastic, and to me, that was, that was very heart moving. I think it was a great job, and I thank everybody who helped make that happen. It was, it was truly special.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Before we get to resolutions, Denise, did you have a...
Oh, that was it, about the ice skating and all that, that's my announcements.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or anything they want to make? Okay. Deputy supervisor, why don't we go to the resolutions, and then we will close open session and go into executive session.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good to go.
We'll get right into it. Resolution number one, Water District Capital Project number 82301, budget amendment. Resolution number two, Water District Budget Transfer. Number three, accepts donation of radios for the Riverhead Fire Marshal. It's an anonymous donation, but we thank whomever it is.
Wow. Yeah, that was a very nice donation, and I think it was about $9,000.
Right. Wow.
To help fund with the radios, because their radios became outdated and wouldn't, couldn't get on the frequency to share with the county, with Fire Matic and others.
Right.
This is great.
That's a big help. Resolution number four, Authorization for One Police Department Employee to Attend an Orientation. Or an orientation. Number five, A Men's Riverhead Water District Schedule at of Rates and Charges.
We talked about this at the last work session.
Right. It's for the high-consumption users.
For the high-consumption users, yes.
Resolution number six, Increase of Yard Waste Fees.
Long time coming. Not much of an increase, but we're not looking to make big increases. We want to try to not hurt the people so much.
Right.
But it was needed.
Number seven, Authorizes Fire Marshal to Attend Fire Alarm and Fire Sprinkler Training. Number eight, Sandy Pond Clubhouse Trade Buildings Managers' Residence Special Permit Secret Coordination, 1495 Rowan Oak Avenue, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-82-1-12.1. Number nine, Classifies the Site Plan Amendment Application for Island Water Park Site Plan as an Unlisted Action Pursuant to Secra, Initiates Coordinating Review Among Involved Agencies, 5835 Middle Country Road, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-135-1-7.34. Number 10, Appoints Marriage Officer James Wooten. Number 11...
Clerk is a marriage officer, and he marries people on a regular basis around here.
Yes, he does. Number 11, Appoints Official Print Newspaper for the Town of Riverhead 2025. Number 12, Appoints an Intern to the Police Department.
This is a college student. It's, I believe, working on a criminal justice degree, and they come and work side by side with the police department for their internship.
Number 13, Reappoints Member to Veterans Advisory Committee, Carrie Nijon.
Excellent worker for the veterans committee.
She does everything, her, Tom, Kim. It's a small group, just with countless hours of work. It's an awesome job.
Small group, but very powerful.
A lot of work done.
Number 14, Reappoints Sub-Registar of Vital Statistics, Carol DeVekio. Number 15, Reappoints Deputy Registar of Vital Statistics, Vanessa Lacan. We just have a typo in the fourth. We had further resolved, so we'll swap that name out.
Okay.
It was just an oversight. Number 16, Schedules Public Hearing for Special Permit Application of Sandy Pond Clubhouse Trade Buildings Managers', I think it means to say Managers' Quarters, 1495 Rowan Oak Avenue, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-82-1-12.1. And that public hearing will take place on January 7th at 2:00 PM. Number 17, Schedules Public Hearing for the Site Plan Amendment Application of Island Water Park, 5835 Middle Country Road, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-135-1-7.34. That public hearing will take place on January 22nd at 6:00 PM. Number 18, Adops Local Law to Men Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 42, Transfer of Development Rights, 301-202, Transfer Development Rights Map Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update.
This is the first of about 17 resolutions that we discussed at the public hearing, had the public hearing, discussed at work session.
Right. They're all pretty lengthy. Do we want to read them all, or do we want to skip? I'm happy to read them.
Yeah, we should read them.
Okay, no problem. Resolution number 19, Adops Local Law to Men Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 2, Districts and Boundaries, 301-6, Boundaries of Districts to Men's Zoning Map to Change Certain Properties to the Residents B40, RB40, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 20, Adops Local Law to Men Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 2, Districts and Boundaries, Section 301-6, Boundaries of Districts to Men's Zoning Map to Change Certain Properties to the Open Space Conservation, OSZ, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. 21, Adops Local Law to Men Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 2, Districts and Boundaries, Section 301-6, Boundaries of Districts to Men's Zoning Map to Change Certain Properties to the Light Industrial, LI, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 22, Adops a Local Law to Men, Chapter 293 of the Riverhead Town Code, entitled Waterways and Water-Related Activities. Number 23, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 2, Districts and Boundaries, Section 301-6, Boundaries of Districts to Men's Zoning Map to Change Certain Properties to the Hamlet Center, HC, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 24, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 2, Districts and Boundaries, Section 301-6, Boundaries of Districts to Men's, to Men's Zoning Map to Change Certain Property to the Calverton Industrial, CI, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 25, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 39, Planned Industrial Park, PIP, Zoning Use District, Section 301-185A, Permitted Uses Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 26, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 24, Industrial B, Zoning Use District, to Remove the Industrial B Zoning Use District, a Reserve, Article 24, Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. I think we have just an additional eye in that Roman numeral. We'll clean that up as well. Number 27, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 23, Industrial A, Zoning Use District, to Remove the Industrial A Zoning Use District, a Reserve, Article 23, Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 28, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part II, Districts, Article 42, Transfer of Development Rights, Section 301-204 through Section 301-208, Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 29, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development Part I, General Provisions, Article 1, Title, Purposes, Definitions, and Interpretations, Section 301-3B, Definitions, Word Usage Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 30, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development, Attachment 4, Light Industrial, LI, District Table of Dimensional Regulations Pursuant to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 31, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development, Attachment 3, Commercial Districts and Dimensional Regulations Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 32, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development, Article 2, Districts and Boundaries, Section 301-5A, Classes of Districts Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 33, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development, to Include Attachment 4B, Town of Riverhead Industrial Districts Table of Use Regulations Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 34, Adops a Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development, Part II, Districts, Article 26, Light Industrial, LI, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 35, Adops Local Law to Men, Chapter 301, Zoning and Land Development, Part II, Districts, Article 25, Industrial C, Zoning Use District Pursuant to the Recommendations of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Number 36, Authorizes Supervisor to Execute Agreement to Extend Agreement with Fundamental Business Services, Inc., FBS.
Must be getting towards the end of the year because all these contracts and renewals are coming up.
Just a pause for a minute. She really goes out studying her Roman numerals.
She did. She's...
She got a little hard this morning. Don't worry.
I noticed that.
Been duly noted.
Yeah.
Number 37, Authorizes the Chief of Police to Execute an Agreement with Riverhead Community Awareness Program, Inc. And number 38, Authorizes the Town Clerk to Publish and Post Bid for Census Water Meters and Accessory Equipment or Reasonable Equivalent and Repair to Meter Reading Equipment.
Frank, I see you in the back of the room. Do you have a hard time getting these, or the meters and stuff, or are they readily available?
They're pretty readily available.
Okay.
We buy them in bulk, and we've been swapping out every one here in town for years now.
Because I hear so many stories still about ordering stuff, and it's months and months delayed and everything, so I was just curious.
A lot of our other material is very delayed, and actually, the measure, the measuring...
Frank, do you maybe want to come up to the microphone? Because the public's not hearing anything you're saying.
This is Frank Mancini from Riverhead Water District. That was a good question. We don't have as many problems with the little one-inch meters, but we do have problems with the measuring units for the larger meters that we replace proactively because if one of our large meters goes down, we lose a ton of revenue. So that part is very hard to come by and gets damaged in the mail a lot. So not so much these little guys.
Okay, Resolution 39, Ratifies the Extension for Leave of Apairances. Number 40, Establishes Fair and Reasonable Sewer Rent for Out-of-Town Facilities for Calendar Year 2023 and 2024. Number 41, Accepts the Resignation of a Traffic Control Specialist. Number 41, Accepts the Resignation of a Traffic Control Specialist. Number 42, Ratifies the Appointment of a Cook to the Senior Citizen Department. Number 43, Appoints a Call-In Food Service Worker. Number 44, Ratifies Appointment of Philip Siegel, Esquire of Siegel &amp; Sittler, PLLC, as Special Counsel to the Board of Ethics. Number 45, Approves Special Event, Chapter 255, Application for the Bob Feller Act of Valor, Bob Feller Act of Valor 5K Run for Life. Number 46, Authorizes the Supervisor to Execute an Agreement with D&amp;B Engineers and Architects PC Regarding a Portion of the Town of Riverhead Storm Water Management Number 47, Water District Capital Project 81855, Plant 2A, Budget Amendment. And that concludes our resolutions.
Okay. That concludes our resolutions in our open session of work session. In a moment, I'll ask to close open session and go into executive session to discuss under contractual matters surrounding contractual agreement between the Town of Riverhead and Lighthouse Theater with Kern, Hurley, and Thomas. I have matters surrounding contractual agreement between the Town of Riverhead and Racetrack, not street, with Howard. Matters surrounding contractual agreement between the Town of Riverhead and Bidma with Howard and Diopola. And matters surrounding contractual agreement between the Town of Riverhead and CVE with Kern and Prudential. Under legal, we have matters surrounding a legal matter with the Riverhead Water District with Prudential and Mancini. Under personnel, we have matters surrounding change in terms and conditions of employment for employees. That's with Howard. And we have matters surrounding the change in status of an employee. That's with me. And that will be it for our executive session. So at this point in time, somebody make a motion to close open session and go into executive session.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are now closed, and we will retire to executive session. Thank you, everybody, and have a great weekend.